January 13th, 2015, we are beginning at 7:05 PM. Members in attendance, I am Katie Silver, I am the Chair of the ZBA. I always want to say nice. Excuse me. We have Joanna Torres on the end, Vicki Danson, Ellen Rocco, and Dave Cockemo, our other member is not here this evening. We have our Secretary, Groban O'Donnell, our Attorney, Victoria Palladoro, and in the audience, we have Brad Wayne, who is the Planner for the Village of New Paltz. We have Mark Jaffe, who is the Building Inspector, and we have the Board Liaison, Sally Rhodes, sitting in the audience. On tonight's agenda, at present, we have one public hearing, one new application, and the approval of the minutes. I would like to have a motion to amend the agenda to hold the public hearing for ZBA 1413. So, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
So, we will add this hearing to the agenda as well. So, the first item before us tonight is a public hearing for ZBA 1416, an application for interpretation regarding Two Mulhunk Avenue. Teresa Fall and Tim Rogers, could you come to the table? Tim, you'd like to say something? Okay. Have a seat. Could we have a motion to open the hearing? Just a second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, so, let's see, first of all, we're going to ask if anyone from the public would wish to speak about this application.
Yes, ma'am.
If you do, would you please state your name and place of residence?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Kenneth Demstager. I'm an attorney. I'm sorry, Kenneth Demstager, an attorney with offices at 1136 Ground 9. And...
What town is that?
Sorry? And I'm here, I represent Mr. Cafrey. Mr. Cafrey is the Principal of the Entity that entered into the stipulation settlement with the village, which resulted in the issuance of the building permits, which are the subject of this application. What I really just wanted to do now, because I haven't heard the presentation from the applicant, I've just briefly looked at it, and it raises several issues, but I wanted to make sure my record was complete with you. So, I had sent to you, and I just want to make sure everyone has this, because if there's, we should make sure we got a complete record, right? December 2nd, 2014, I have a letter dated that I sent to Ms. Silver as Chairwoman, in which I lay out several reasons why, legal reasons, not factual reasons, but legal reasons, as to why this application is inappropriately made to this board. If this application were to be appropriately made anywhere, it should be made to a court of appropriate jurisdiction, Supreme Court, because what this application wishes to do is ask this board to review a stipulation settlement entered into between my client and the village to end a contentious piece of litigation. And the long and short of that litigation, when we were very happy to settle, was that my client had two building permit applications pending before the village changed its law. And my client, our, my client's position, our position was, we had two applications pending, which gave us an asset right ability to build without getting a site plan approved. There was some back and forth on that, the building permits did not issue, a lawsuit ensued. And it was ultimately resolved by a compromise. And the result was that the village's position was, we didn't get the building permits issued, the village's permission position was that because of the controversy, the issue there, they didn't have an obligation. And ultimately, we filed these papers, about this much paper, for Judge Malconian to decide, and cooler heads prevailed. And what we said was, well, we take the position, neither of these applications need to go in front of the planning board, and the village takes a position that both of them do, so why don't we do this? We'll proceed with building permits on one of the two lots, and the other lot will submit to the site plan proceeding as if the application was filed after the new law had been adopted by the village, because the village adopted the law eliminating, or I'm sorry, now making mandatory that site plan exercised. And so, that was the settlement, and that settlement was signed by the village, signed by the building inspector. We proceeded with that settlement, the settlement was submitted to court, the lawsuit was discontinued. I have provided you with a copy of that settlement agreement, it's been so ordered by Judge Malconian, you have that as well. I just want to make sure the record reflects you have that as well. I've also provided you with a copy of that stipulation with proof that it's been entered in the public record in the clerk's office. So, we provide you with that letter, from, without wanting to read that letter to you, but from the flow, that you have a stipulation settlement of a litigated matter, you then have COs that issued as a result of that stipulation, and a building ensued. And it was really no secret, and when I got this interpretation, or I got this application, I read it very carefully, and the language of the application is very blunt, it says, look, these COs need to be set aside because the building permits were illegally issued. It doesn't say that the COs were granted improperly because of construction, it just says the building permits were illegally issued, that the building permits, in fact, were issued as a consequence of that stipulation. And if there is an argument with that stipulation, as I've laid out my letter to you, I think that argument, no one should be denied the right to have an argument, but we should all have the right to be in front of the body that has the legal authority to decide. And so, in my view, as I've laid out my letter, for a few reasons, if you're going to contest a stipulation of a litigated matter that was litigated in Supreme Court, that's the place you go to contest it. You don't, you don't come here and ask a ZBA to review what the Supreme Court did. And that just seems to me the way the law reads, but there are other issues, too. And the building permits were issued, and there was notice that they were issued, and these are, this is the notice, I mean, it wasn't, obviously, it wasn't advertised in the paper, but on May 29, 2014, this construction was going on. These are the photos, I'd like to enter into these, into the records. In May 6 of 2014, the foundations are working. Now, I read in the, in the application that the applicant didn't have noticed the building permits until later in the season, and yet, I also read, and I think I read correctly, that the applicants are neighbors of the site, so they could hardly not say they didn't have noticed of this construction activity, and yet, they didn't go to the building permit, or they didn't file their complaint, or their request for an interpretation here at that time. And your village has a law that says, if you're on notice of something that gives rise to a claim to come before the ZBA, you have to do it within 60 days of that event. And obviously, this application was filed well beyond that 60 days. And so, even if this was the right place to be, what I say in my letter, is that by waiting so long, by virtue of the 60-day, I would call it a statute of limitation, but it's not referred to exactly in that phrase, it's the same concept. By waiting beyond the 60 days permitted by the village's code, and the state law on this topic, the applicants were too late to come to this board, even if they were properly here in the first place. But there is a last piece, and my letter is just a little bit more detailed than I would, it lays out the law, and I don't know whether you consulted with counsel or not, and it's not my business to ask you to or not, but I put it there for a reason, and if you have any questions, we'll discuss it with your lawyer. But there is another part of this, which just boils down to fundamental fairness, and it's called the doctrine of leachies, L-A-C-H-E-S. And what it says is that if you have a right, and you want to enforce it, and you want to enforce it in equity, you want someone to do something, some governmental body's going to direct you to do something, a judge is going to direct you to do something, that you have to timely make your claim. So, if this board sits in a quasi-judicial setting, right, you take appeals, you make decisions and interpret, and you review maybe the buildings inspectors' work, or some appeal gets to you. And so, this applicant is asking you for relief, they're asking you to say that these certificates of occupancy aren't legal, and they're asking to do that, and again, this is the language of their application, because the building permits were issued illegally. And so, you've got the, you've got the wrong forum setting, you've got the 60-day rule issue, but you've got this leachies thing. The law says if you sit on a remedy, you may lose it. And so, in the letter that I sent to you, I very much identified for you a particular case, and our laws come, not just from the statute books, but from judges who have written decisions considering these facts. In this particular case, these applicants waited throughout the entire period of construction to raise their issue. They didn't come here, they didn't go to the building inspector, certainly didn't call Mr. Cafrey, he would have called me. And they waited until that construction activity that you see in May of 2014 turns into a completed house in August of 2014, and now they file their applications after it's fully populated with young men and women who can come to this village to go to the university. And if I, if I may... The case that I refer you to is the case of Clarkby Town of Sand Lake Zoning Board of Appeals, 5283rd. And I won't read you the case, but it is, it's virtually exactly on point. Somebody had a problem. They were, a house was being built too close to a sideline, it was blocking the view of a lake. But that person waited till a house was completely built before they went to complain. And what the court said ultimately was, look, you saw that house going up, if you had a complaint about it, you really should have gone and said something about it early on, and not waited until the house was built. And because you waited until the house was built, you've lost your right to go forward. So, that's what's in my letter, December 2nd, 2014. And then, I was speaking to Ms. Palladoro to, this was before the snow day that blew us out here, and I want to, I call Ms. Palladoro, as I would call any attorney or any board, and say, look, you have my letter, you have a copy of the court's order, Judge Malconian's going to take care of that. Are there any other issues? Because if there are any issues, I don't know about them, but I'd like to know so I can address them. Have your... And so, there was a question as to whether or not the lots in question were legally merged. And so, I sent to you a letter on December 29th, and I'm very familiar with that, in that litigation, the one thing that we didn't litigate was whether or not those lots were legally merged. So, on December 29, 2014, I sent you a letter saying to you, here's, here's what the rule was, well, I can introduce it shortly, these pieces of land, the pieces of land that we build and own and occupy are either created by grant, meaning that our ancestors granted a piece to each other, or created by the planning board by subdivision approval. And if a piece of land is created by a subdivision approval, you can't combine it with another piece without going to the planning board, because their approval gives them jurisdiction forever. But if you, if it's pieces of land by grant, meaning that one farmer gave it to another farmer before zoning, you can, the law is that you can merge those without planning board action. And my letter to you, December 29, 2014, and that's not the issue, by the way, on appeal here tonight, but I just heard it might be an issue, I provided it with you. When I went through my litigation file, and if you don't have these letters, I can give you copies of them, but I went through my litigation file and found that there's a letter dated from Mr. Ariol, who at that time was the village's attorney, on August 17, 2012. And if you want a copy of it, I think you're having your file, but I will read you the copy, my file, I didn't bring an extra copy. First, it is my opinion that the merger of the subject lots by deed transfer does appear to obviate the need for a subdivision application. Having never been lots delineated on a filed map, such merger can affect the consolidation of lots. I do, and so, the position was presented to the village, and the village's attorney ultimately signed off based on materials that I provided him, and it...
Would you like a copy of that letter? Do you have anything?
I will. You know what, I've had to look through, looking for it the last couple of days, I'll certainly give you a copy of the letter, and give you a copy of the materials that went along with it, because what I did was, to answer that question, was, we did title searches of the parcels of land to see where they came from, and these, these parcels came from, I don't remember, but I can tell you it was, probably it was before I was born, which really is, well, that's another story. So, I sent you that, and then I sent you the filed stipulation, and I wanted to make sure you had those on the record. And I brought those photos tonight, which I'd like to put in the record, for the reasons that I described to you. And I'd like to hear what the applicant may or may not have to say, within the bounds of its, of their application for an interpretation. Because I presented this as, from what I could see, is that this board should be saying, if you have a concern, take it to the Supreme Court. If, after hearing the applicant, the board would find otherwise, I've not heard what the applicant has to say, and I would like the opportunity to respond to whatever he has to say. And if I can't do it intelligently tonight, I would like the opportunity to do it at, you know, the next meeting, over the further submission. But I see it as a two-part step. The first is, okay, is the applicant here in the right form? That's a yes or no. And then, if it is, if he's not, we stop, I mean, this is the way I see it, my decision tree. And if he is, we continue. So, I only prepared my argument to address the first of these two questions. And if we go beyond that, I'd like to hear what the applicant said, and have the opportunity to respond.
Okay.
So, thank you, you're very patient, I appreciate it.
Okay, so you would like these entered into...
Yeah, I'll bring them down.
If you can take them down.
How about showing them to the audience?
Okay, sure.
There are some people here who are, who are here, but they're not familiar with the issues.
Wait, wait, can you wait just a second? I will get to you. I believe I saw some young folks come in from the, from the, it was a participation in government, and if everyone would indulge me for a moment?
Thank you, Katie.
Welcome, we're very glad to have you here. You are at a meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Joanna Weiss, Victor, Vicki Danson, myself, and Ellen Rocco, we are the members of the board, this is our secretary, this is our attorney, and the two people sitting at the table right now are making an appeal to the board right now, and that's what we are opening up this for public comment. So, if you have any questions, hold on to them at the end, we'll be happy to talk to you and explain to you, as best we're able to, what happened, but welcome to the meeting.
Also, would we get a copy of the...
Yeah. And we'll send you. Okay.
So, do you want to, so, for you, young, yeah, listen, we're all at once, these are the photos I showed, and the, if you don't mind, I'll just explain why I showed it to them, is that all right?
Well, just show, just show...
These are the photos, I hope you heard everything I said before, but here's a photo. So, this application was recently filed, this application. It's about this construction, and this construction was started in...
Okay, Mr. Steigler, I think they heard that part of it, we just want people to be able to see the photos, and we've got a lot of people here who would like to speak, so...
This is the photo, May 6, 2014, the construction activity that took place on that day.
Oh, no.
This was the construction activity on that lot on May 29 of 2014. And this, on August of 2014, were the completed structures, the work had started on them back in May of 2014. All right? Everyone else heard everything else?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, would anyone else like to address this? Please state your name and place of residence?
I have a question, please, Rose. Got a question about, does any of us need contention to have to do with the interior layout of that building? Is it at all a part of...
Can I answer?
Yeah, go ahead and answer it.
Well, I can answer your question and respond to Mr. Cafrey's attorney's...
Well, let's leave that for later.
Well, it's actually, no, but it actually answers both questions simultaneously. We are not appealing the building permits, we are appealing the certificates of occupancy, which include what's going on in the interiors of that.
Okay, well, thank you, because that, the reason I ask that is, the attorney showed pictures of the outside of the building, the attorney mentions a case where someone didn't complain about what a building under construction looked like from the outside. If anything at issue has to do with inside and windows, being able to see the outside of the building does not give you any information on the inside of the layout. So, as we say, those pictures are irrelevant.
Okay, thank you.
And additionally, because we are appealing their certificates of occupancy, we were very careful to look into, when does one appeal the certificates of occupancy? And you do it within 30 days of them being issued. So, we're well within the statute of limitation to appeal the certificates of occupancy.
And that is because the certificates of occupancy weren't created until October, is that right?
I believe they were issued in August.
Issued in August.
There, there are a couple of them, that, there's, I believe, two certificates of occupancy and one certificate of compliance, they were all issued towards the end of August.
To the end of August, okay. Would anyone else from the public like to address this? Please, Katie.
My name's Phil Garrett, I'm here to talk, so I just had a question, are there sprinklers systems in the building? Do we know if there's sprinklers?
Sprinklers.
If you can answer some factual questions, answer now.
Okay. Yes?
I just want to ask you a question, although the building is built with fire code and sheet rock all throughout the interior. I just had a brief statement I wanted to leave.
Your name, please?
My name is Brian Rogers.
Okay.
I was born and raised in New Paltz, I'm the local town resident. Over the last two decades, I've lived in various places in the northeast, but returned here three years ago, with my wife to live and to raise our children. New Paltz is a community that offers us many reasons to call it home. I'm also a senior vice president of Miller Samuel Incorporated, Manhattan's premier real estate appraisal and consulting firm. I specialize in residential real estate in Manhattan and Brooklyn, and have a deep understanding of property values and how they are affected by external factors. I work in an environment that is strongly managed and monitored by the New York City Department of Buildings, where code is strictly followed and enforced in order to maintain the city's character. It's my professional opinion that all municipalities, whether large or small, have the responsibility to protect their environment, to establish building codes, and to follow them evenly. Codes are to protect the community as a whole, and help preserve property values by ensuring that existing property owners do not have their homes and/or investments compromised by others. Strong property values also deserve a local tax base. Municipality allows builders to skirt code, to build in excess without abiding by established laws. Residents run the substantial risk of having their community and neighborhoods permanently and adversely affected. The Village of New Paltz is comprehensive code, and complaints, codes that are listed in detail, and include reasonable explanations. Specifically, those New Paltz zoning laws include regulations deemed necessary to promote general welfare. Included are the following baselines for building codes and code enforcement, excuse me. They're to promote orderly development, to promote and facilitate the orderly physical development of Village New Paltz. They're to conserve and enhance property guidance, to encourage the most appropriate uses of the land in the community, in order to conserve and enhance property guidance. They're to provide for adequate housing, to make provision for a growing residential population with a variety of needs, while also preserving the quality of existing stable residential neighborhoods. And they're also to prohibit incompatible uses, to prohibit uses, buildings or structures which are incompatible with the character of development, or the permitted uses within specific zoning districts. These provisions are established with the Village of New Paltz to preserve our neighborhoods while reasonably allowing for and anticipating growth. The development of Two Mulhunk Avenue goes far above and beyond existing code in its rationale. In my experience, this scenario would never be allowed in the city of New York. If our local government does not follow the laws that exist, that will happen, what will happen to our homes, their values, and our tax base when non-law-abiding developers get their way?
Thank you.
Is my only opportunity to speak before they do?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, Terry's actually part of the agreement.
Technically, he's not on your application, and so, just to, you know, be dotting our i's and crossing our t's, if we can do it this way. Sorry. Could we have a copy of that for the record?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Terry, Terry Dunham.
As Tim Rogers had mentioned, we're not appealing the building permits, they're germane to the COs, but cannot be appealed, so really, that's very relevant. The only thing at issue, maintaining at issue, is the certificate of occupancy. A certificate of occupancy is issued on two conditions. One, that the finished project conforms to the approved site plan, and two, that it conforms to the law. And this project didn't need the certificate of occupancy, which is, you, I had a presentation which could be copied, there are a large amount of violations on the site. Not only of village code, there's a state code as well, including the state fire code. There is case law, which states that it is improper to issue a certificate of occupancy when there are unsafe conditions on the site. The fire code in New York requires a two-lane driveway, 20 feet wide, unstructured. The driveway on this site is 18 feet wide, with strict parking spaces on one side, so that it narrows to 10 feet, as opposed to 20 feet, which the fire code requires. The village code requires 25 feet. And so, instead of 25 foot two-lane driveway that the code requires, we only have 10 feet. The fire laws state that when the access road serves a site with more than four buildings, it is required to provide all the standards of an access road, which in this case would be a turnaround at the end. Something like a 96-foot diameter cul-de-sac, like 121 or 120-foot hammerhead or tee, and so that a fire truck can turn around and get out, without having to back all the way down the driveway. This site has five buildings, and there is no provision for a turnaround on that access road, a driveway. So, you do not have clear fire lane of the width that the law requires, you don't have the turnaround that the law requires. It's violating the fire code, these are unsafe conditions, and it was improper to issue the CO in those conditions on the site. There are numerous code violations. There are numerous code violations that relate to everything, as far as parking, as far as the requirements in both state law and local law for what is habitable space and what is non-habitable space. And you have occupied rooms that are rented out to young tenants in those buildings that are not legally habitable, that violate state law for habitable space. And the CO should never have been issued under those conditions. It's improper to issue the CO when you have violations of state code in the site, and by the way, these will internalize nothing that would see the construction. And it is improper to issue a CO when you have unsafe conditions as a violation of the New York State Fire Code. Then there is the matter that the building permits were issued in violation of law. Because this project, by law, had undergone planning or site plan review, and they did not do that. The original Article 78 that was filed was to not have planning or review, and was to not have seeker review. The agreement, the settlement agreement made no mention of this. But the building department went ahead with this project as if those were parts of the condition of settlement. The requirement for seeker review, for planning or review, were never fulfilled. They're critically important that they are taken place, because those are when the public has the chance to observe what is being planned and to comment on it before the construction takes place. The public never had the opportunity to review this project and comment on it before construction started. So you had improperly issued building permit. However, in general, to appeal a building permit is discouraged, because building permits are issued on the assumption that construction will proceed according to code. And it says so on the building permit. It says that that permit does not give the person permission to violate any laws, state or local. So the assumption is that the person doing the construction will proceed according to law. And so, it's not proper to appeal the building permit because of that. But because there was no site plan review, because there was no seeker review, it was issued properly, and it is law that we would have a building permit issued for new construction. The certificate of occupancy, which was subsequently issued, is subject to all the infirmities of the building permit. And so, because the building permit was not issued properly, was invalid, the certificate of occupancy is similarly invalid. It inherits those infirmities of the building permit. So you have the COs that have been issued, that inherited all the infirmities of building permits. They were issued even though there were multiple code violations on site at the time, and they were issued even though there were safety violations of state fire code existing on the site at the time and still existing on the site. Those COs were improper, they should never have been issued, in some cases, that we're killing this.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on this issue?
If you don't mind, I'd like to show a video that might, it has.
You get your chance in a little bit.
Okay, I didn't know when I was supposed to do it, because I didn't.
That's okay. I've got to read a few things into the record.
Okay.
But we want to give the public a chance, yes? Could you state your name and speak up?
Charlotte Carr.
Thank you.
I have a lot of thoughts. I have observed, and I live on the Pacer, so I'm not getting that all the time. That hill and that driveway is, at certain points, it's not visible, people can't see who's coming out there. And I, you know, I've really slowed down, especially considering that intersection network, where people are swinging out into the roads, where they can get on the water street and vice versa. I've seen people backing out of that driveway, and I'm just curious, yeah.
Backing down that way?
Backing down the driveway, out into the road.
Why?
Maybe because it's not enough room for that to maneuver at the top of the hill.
Wow.
I don't know how many cars are there.
It's 11 feet wide at its narrowest point.
I don't know how many, I don't know how many occupants are in those buildings, but it certainly seems like, you know, there are times when the road, the driveway is icy enough that they're parked down below. There's also a runoff situation where the water runs out into, you know, across Pencil Pill, and, you know, a lot of people come down Pencil Pill and stop halfway up the hill and then come out. It's just a very dangerous situation.
Would anyone else like to address this issue?
I have two questions I just want to ask, because I'm unaware of two things.
Okay, go ahead.
I have the application, I think I have the application, is there anything else in this record, by way of an application, other than the, whatever dated September 19, 2014, signed by Dr. Lisa Paul, Julia O'Malley-C?
Yeah, Duncan, let's, I mean, certainly, this is the application we have, and that evening we were given an additional piece of information, I don't know if it's properly part of the application, I have to go back through.
So, the reason why I ask that is because this application says, doesn't mention any enforcement issues such as free enlistment.
Yes.
And I'm not taking away anyone's observations, I don't know if it's true or not, it's just simply this application doesn't address them.
The evening that we received the application, there was a document that was dated October 42.
I haven't seen it.
Two pages, and.
From the last meeting?
It was, no, it was.
Yeah, what's the last meeting?
Was it the last meeting, really? No, I think we had one in between, but it was the last meeting that you were at.
Yeah, right.
Yes, I think we had one intermediary.
That's actually, that was in the minutes that were approved in November.
Okay, so this was part of the minutes from November?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Which is?
The minutes of the zoning board of appeals from November 19.
It's this application then, that I have?
It was just a supporting.
It was supporting documentation that was handed out to us by the appellants on October 14th, when they first addressed the board. And it became part of the minutes.
Does it speak to that the user enforcement issues, it's only related to.
I think what Mr. Caffrey is getting at is, the application, the appeal is based on the assertion that the certificates of occupancy are invalid because they are not pursuant to a site plan. And so I think he's asking whether the application was amended to include an additional basis for review, which is the CO should not have been issued because of violations.
Yeah, that's specifically what I am asking, because it seems, and with all due respect to everyone I'm hearing from.
Yes.
That part of the argument being made tonight is that, that one part is, when it says in the application, well, the building permits shouldn't have been issued, and obviously, it said the law, it says yes. But the other part was, the CO shouldn't have been issued because when they issued the CO, there were violations of various codes. And I didn't see that in the original application. And I would ask, if it is part of the application, if that is now part of the application, has that part of the application been referred to your building inspector for a report as to whether or not these conditions exist?
It's kind of why we're here tonight, we're appealing the certificates of occupancy because of the code violations, which we are going over tonight. So until we, until we discuss those items.
But, so, this is a good point, because basis for the appeal has written, based on maximum site plan review, so they are bringing in issues today.
So you are essentially preparing to amend the application, is that what I'm hearing?
It sounds like it's.
If I may, just to finish this, and I appreciate that people want to discuss building violations, but the process would be that your building inspector first has to determine that a violation exists or it doesn't. And then when he makes his decision, then that decision comes to you, Paul Regeau. It's not for an applicant to bring allegations of building violations directly to the board. The board reviews what the building inspector says, so.
Absolutely.
So I think, with all due respect, I'm just trying to get some clarification, because I only prepared against the application we have in front of us. If, if, if there is an allegation that this building contains fire violations, driveway violations, too many rooms, or something in the interior, the first thing I urge this applicant and these witnesses is to go make an appointment to see the building inspector and report it to him. And if he comes back and says there's a violation, if my client doesn't agree, then my client can come here and ask you to review his decision, because that's the way it goes. If he comes back and says, no, there are no violations there, then the advocates can come and say, review what he did, because he's the first step in that process. My concern is that, I don't, I'm listening to people saying there are violations, and there were violations, and this was issued in violation. And the only person in this whole room, as I understand the law, that can make that decision initially is the building inspector. And he can't make it if complaint hasn't been filed. So if these folks want to argue that there are violations, they should file a complaint with the building inspector, and let's see what he says. And if he can come to the building, we could operate 100% with any inspection. But he's the one that's going to make the first decision, and then you would properly review that decision if somebody wasn't happy with it. So I'm asking that, did anyone go to the building inspector and ask him to file a complaint about violations that can be reviewed tonight? Because if not, I'd have a little uncomfortable.
On numerous, on numerous occasions, we approached the building department prior to appealing these certificates of occupancy. Additionally, when we appealed these certificates of occupancy, we were not giving the right applications. So we've had to kind of circumvent a very convoluted process that we've received no correct feedback from. So we're doing the best with, with what we have. And on October 14th, when we came to you to discuss our appeal of these certificates of occupancy, you can refer to that, that two-page memo, and we clearly identified code violations in that memo. And, again, we are appealing the certificates of occupancy that are in violation because of no proper site plan and various code violations.
Can I just ask one other question, Madam Chairman, would you ask it before?
I'm sorry, yes.
All I could want to know for this record is, has the applicant, or anyone in this audience, filed a formal complaint with the building inspector saying, making an allegation that something about that building violates code? Has anyone done that?
I'll gladly respond.
Right, in writing?
In writing, absolutely. We have several emails that were sent to the building department, we have an open letter that we sent to the newspaper, the only response we received.
That one doesn't count, but you sent emails to the building department.
Emails, emails, as well as the open letter. The only response we received from the building department when we asked about these code violations was an invitation to discuss. And we responded again in writing and said, we do not want to discuss this, we would like a written response, which we never received.
Do you know what that was sent, can I speak to that?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm the code enforcement officer, Mark J. I've responded numerous times emails, saying, come here, go through the files, find exactly what you needed, we'll sit down and talk. There was no, no one's ever told me there was, the only violation kept coming, saying, there was no site plan. No one, no one ever talked about fire lanes, there's no emails with it.
We can gladly call the emails.
First of all, fire lanes apply, like I said, with five more buildings, there's technically only three buildings, three, two-family buildings on this property.
There are five buildings on the property.
There are three two-family buildings on this property, and that's even according to the, to the state Supreme Court decision that this village agreed to. There are three two-family buildings, agreed to Supreme Court decision.
Wait, no, I said that, I mean.
So there's three, so when you go fire more, so there are less than five, so the whole thing about the fire lanes and the whole 90-foot turnaround does not apply to this application. And then again, any state fire prevention codes do not come in front of this board. Those are New York State Fire Prevention Codes, go from the New York State Building Code to the New York, this board would have to review this. So again, I'm going to go back to the beginning, this is a, this is arguing whether the Article 78 that was filed, before I even started this, Article 78 was filed from the applicant against, against the village. Because the village had, I think it was zoning board ruled that they were village, so the proper channels were followed, they filed Article 78 against the village. Now, whether they want to see it in a code or not, Article 78 is part of the zoning codes, all New York states zoning codes. So as soon as the Article 78 is decided, whether it's an agreement, judge's order, whatever it is, Article 78 is filed by the judge. That has now become code, that is only code, and we cannot enforce anything but that Article 78 article. So here again, what I've said this before, I understand and please, please the applicants, whether they like the, whether they like the thing that's up there or not, I have, I cannot give the permits and I don't like what you're doing. If it meets the code, I have to give you the permit, it met the code. This should not be in front of this board, like I repeatedly say, this is an appeal, New York State appellate court decision, you are, you are appealing a Supreme Court decision. And this just keeps going on and on about.
It is an honest, a pretty.
A CO, a CO is issued based on permits based on the Article 78.
Okay, let's get back to.
It was an out-of-court settlement.
Okay, let's get back to.
It's Article 78 agreement, but signed by a judge.
Also, we can also refer to the site plan, which clearly labels building A, building B, building C, building D, and the machine shed. Any reasonable person would count. This is the site plan, this is the site plan, this is the site plan.
Okay, let's get back to the hearing, please. Okay, thank you, Mark.
I did just look at the submission, the two-page submission, and it doesn't change the basis for the appeal. It says, it clearly goes through and explains what site plan would have caught in that context. Why site plan review is important, because it would have caught the following issues, they do not assert that there are violations on the property. So if this is a new basis for the appeal, I'm going to recommend that we hold it over and we get something in writing from the code enforcement officer regarding those alleged violations. Because that was something that was prepared for this meeting, because it's the first we're hearing.
Okay.
So, again, when you get to a violation, a violation comes up, we deal with our department. You can't violate a site plan that does not exist.
Okay, thank you.
All violations can only be dealt through our department at this point.
Okay, thank you, and let us, is there anyone?
Will gladly provide any paper trail where we reached out to the building department and the responses that we received from the building department, or lack thereof.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would, that was my agenda, who would like to address this issue? Thank you for that, that's. Okay, thank you. If not. So now I've just. Where did this come from? It's all. I don't know, it is that one, I don't know. This, yeah, but this needs to become part of the record, we need more time to. Okay. But is that what the is, is that to what he's referring? There was just something put down on the table. This document here, we would have received after that meeting.
There's no date on it?
It's 11/24/10. So.
This is not technically part of the interview.
I know, but just as a point of information, can we ask him if that's what you're referring to? Yeah, is this what you are referring to, that you sent to us? No?
Well, it does, yeah.
I don't know what it is.
Oh, it is, it is, it is. This is, this is what we submitted in October.
No, you couldn't have submitted it in October. It's dated November 24th.
The October submission...
I have the October submission. But, all right, we need to get these submissions, because obviously you need to see everything that we're seeing.
Well, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Is our department submitting a new application?
We'll gladly amend our application if that's required.
Okay, let's slow down, and that... All right. So, let me just continue on and read some things into the record. First of all, I'd like to say that, you know, the ZVA people on the ZVA have taken a lot of time and read through a lot of documents, and we have, you know, we're taking this very seriously. The building inspector provided a letter of determination regarding this application, which reads, "An appeal has been issued to the zoning board for the property at Two Mohawk Avenue. The appeal questions the validity of the certificates, of the certificate of occupancies and the certificate of compliance. The two appeals of the COs have gone past the date to appeal. This action cannot be reviewed by the zoning board as per Village Code 212-59D11. Procedure for appeals, in addition to the procedural rules set forth in subsection A of this section, the following rules shall apply in all appeals. One time of appeal, notice of appeal shall be filed with the building inspector and the Secretary of the Board of Appeals within 30 days of the date of the action appealed from specifying the grounds there on..." This is just for the public record. This is just reading, go get a chance. The CC in question does not fall within the timeframe of the appeal. Before a review can be considered, the zoning board should be aware that the project in question does not, did not require a site plan. The matter was resolved in an Article 78 judgment by the State of New York Supreme Court, which supersedes local zoning boards. In the settlement, the village agreed to grant the project without the requirements of the site plan approval. This would make the site plan review non-required, and therefore the appeal to the Village Code 212-23 site plan review would be unable to proceed. This would be due to the fact that since no site plan was required, this code does not even apply to this project. The settlement also grants the building inspector jurisdiction over the matter of the settlement, Section 22 of the settlement. Once a project has won to the Supreme Court Article 78 and been agreed upon, then all further appeals to the project must be done at a state appeals court, not at a local zoning board. I understand the feeling of the appealing party, but the matter has been settled through the settlement. All concerns have been addressed at the beginning of the project before the developer and the village board proceeded forward. The planning...
Sorry, Katie, just for the record, when you're reading that, you read the CC in question does not fall within the timeframe, but it says it does fall within.
Thank you, thank you. It does fall within the timeframe. Thank you. Okay, then the planning board made the following recommendation on October 21st, 2014. Mr. Stephens recommended to take no position on this application. Mr. Litten seconded, five ayes, zero nays, zero absent motion carries. Do we want to continue this public hearing to another meeting? It seems we have some issues that perhaps requires some clarification or amendment.
Well, can we...
Maybe you get to talk as soon as something makes sense.
But I wanted to respond to what you're reading, because we received a note from...
You can, but let me just get the motion on the table, okay? And then you get the floor. Would anyone like to motion to continue the public hearing?
Well, I'm still ready to make a decision now, so if that's what the question is. Yeah, so...
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
So it will be continued to the next meeting?
It will be continued to the next meeting. We know how to have fun. Now, it's Mr. Rogers' turn to speak.
And it would be nice if, if, if we could let the speakers speak without interruption as you had at the beginning.
So, I have a question about what you're reading, because we received a note from, from Brenne White, where she said that there was no issue, because I explained how, I think at some point there was a question about whether our appeal was received within 30 days. And then we received a note back from Brenne, and she explained that, yes, all three of the, well, the two certificates of occupancy and the certificate of compliance would all be considered and all be included in this appeal. So I don't exactly understand.
This was just the building inspector's opinion. Mark, was it your opinion?
So that conflicts with the, the village planners emailed us.
Okay. So, no. This is just a determination that we got from the building inspector. He is giving us his opinion. We have read, we have entered it into the record. So, now, say what you want to say to us.
Sure, I have some prepared remarks that I'll share regarding this appeal of these certificates. Why risk New Paltz's financial position and residents' lives by granting these certificates to Mohawk Avenue? How do fire trucks access the buildings at Two Mohawk Avenue? Who pays for a lawsuit if someone dies at the housing complex that appears to have been constructed in violation of various state and local laws? What happens to an R2-zoned neighborhood when an R3-sized housing complex is jammed in requiring outsized police attention and potentially compromising neighborhood character and area property values? We are appealing the Two Mohawk Avenue certificates of occupancy because we believe in code enforcement in order to maintain and preserve one, community character, and two, our tax base. New Paltz must insist that development abide by our existing laws or we run substantial risk of permanent adverse effects to our community and neighborhoods. These provisions were established to preserve and protect while responsibly allowing for and anticipating growth. The housing complex at Two Mohawk Ave. goes above and beyond existing coding and its rationale. Some examples, Code 212-47.1 requires one parking space per bedroom. This project's site plan indicates 21 bedrooms. However, the site plan indicates nine striped parking spaces, and there have been nearly 40 cars parked at this site regularly. Nine of these cars are parked at the bottom of the hill near the intersection of Mohawk Water Street, Plains and Pencil Hill in the off-street parking area. Are these, are there only 19 parking spots striped? Because Code 212-43C requires that development with more than 20 parking spaces have sidewalks and curbs? There are no sidewalks or curbs at Two Mohawk Avenue. Additionally, the developers' floor plans indicate walls and closets for at least 38 bedrooms, not 21 or 19. And I handed to you an example of one of the floor plans where you'll see it says Bedroom 4, but there are three arrows pointing to rooms, which I think any reasonable person would consider that these are bedrooms. They're separated by divided walls, and they each have closets. So if you tally up each of those rooms, you end up with 38 total rooms in this housing complex, not 21 or not 19. And I provided you with two of the floor plan examples. There are many more. But these are, these are the most egregious examples.
Can I ask, Courtney, about these?
The floor plans from the building department.
Floor plans came from the building department?
Yep, I foiled the floor plans and, and paid, and paid for them.
These aren't the floor plans, though?
They're not the floor plans.
I'm sorry, these aren't the floor plans?
Let's, let's definitely have that on record, that the building inspector is saying that these are not the floor plans. Let me continue. But even if there were only 19 bedrooms needing 19 parking spaces, the parking lot at Two Mohawk Avenue would still not be large enough or safe enough, because it does not conform to requisite driving, driveway widths, aisles between parking spaces, or parking spot dimensions discussed in Code 212-43. A 19-car parking lot would need to be much larger to meet Village Code and comply with New York State Fire Code 511.2.6, which says, "Driveways and portions thereof that serve more than four buildings shall meet the design requirements of fire apparatus access roads." Based on our research, I do not believe our fire chief would sign off on this parking lot at Two Mohawk Avenue or feel confident a ladder truck could make the turn coming down Mohawk Avenue into this housing complex. But if the parking lot was significantly larger, the property would have even more impervious surface, and an R2-zoned property is not allowed to have lot coverage greater than 30%, as described in 212-13. This developer appears to have built an R3-zoned housing complex in an R2-zoned neighborhood. There are significant differences between R2 and R3 as described in our Code 212-13. For example, maximum lot coverage in R2 is 30%, in R3 it is 60%. R3 permits multifamily dwellings and townhouses, and R2 would require a special permit. And I've listed some other curious inconsistencies. Both the building permit and certificate of occupancy, 12-052 for Building B, used the phrase "two-story addition", but Building B is clearly a three-and-a-half-story building. So I also shared with you the certificate of occupancy and the building permit for, for the addition. And you'll see, it says "two-story addition". And here are photographs of Building B, which I don't think any person, any reasonable person would say that this is a two-story building. This is clearly a three-and-a-half-story building.
I'm sorry, you said this is Building what?
This is Building B.
Do you have copies for everyone on the board?
These are, just get back...
This is my, this is my copy.
Mark, we're going to wait for...
I just want to get, I think, was I think these are the floor plans in that building?
I...
I think that's what these are. Keep looking, I think these are the original ones.
Absolutely.
Am I my keeping list?
Yeah, those floor plans, those floor plans are for Building B.
I think we should make sure that...
Not the new ones.
Yeah, let's make sure that Rogan gets a copy of what we're doing for the record.
So I wrote...
These are from the original, those are not the original.
That's correct. I mean, we can also provide floor plans for Buildings C and D, which also show just as ridiculous designations for a single bedroom, but there are obviously multiple bedrooms.
So to be clear, these are not for Building as part of the appeal, right?
No, this is for the entire complex, that floor plan. That, that is just to illustrate that there are 38 bedrooms on this complex when the complex has 19 striped parking lots.
But this is not for one of the buildings that we found in the CO?
I mean, I can gladly go...
It's not what we're looking at.
Sure. We can, we can, we can spend all night going over floor plans and show really egregious examples of...
Could you, could you focus on the buildings that are the subject of your appeal?
Well, what's, what's very important here is that it's all related to the subject of our appeal. We're talking about 19 striped parking spots that are supposed to provide parking for Buildings C and D, which is the subject of our appeal.
Okay. So if we can look at things from C and D, just because...
And I'm incredibly aware of how these all interrelate. And the floor plans for C and D show just as alarming descriptions of, of a single bedroom, but any reasonable person would consider it to be more than one bedroom.
But are these the same floor plans that were submitted as part of the building permit that was approved by the settlement order? I mean, are you saying that they changed somehow in between the settlement?
I've only received one set of floor, floor plans. I asked for, I foiled floor plans for the building, the certificate of occupancy that we are appealing.
Right, and so the building permit was issued, so you're not suggesting that the building permit was issued for one thing and something else was constructed? I'm just trying to follow the argument.
No, but, but I think we should, there is something I can address. Do you remember? The design of the building was laid out, we're trying to show that it could be done. We have that new, new plan, we have new plans for this. So, what's being built there is actually before the house for that.
Yes, yes.
I can't keep hearing it.
What, you, you, which was not, the permit was not issued for... The original set that there was no, the permit was not issued for it, showed the possibility of adding, switching into, taking the big rooms, making it two. We saw that in the original plans, we addressed it. We had new plans, showed that we know this can't be done. It's not on the plans. The doors removed on the plans, the walls removed on the plans. Those plans were the ones the permits were issued for. And I do understand what you're saying. That is a concern that the building department has to be addressing.
These are, these are, these are the floor plans for C and D.
So the COs for C and D were issued pursuant to the building permits?
That's B.
For C and D. And those building permits were issued on plans, even if you're saying you might not agree with them, but that's what they were issued for?
No, no, the original plans, we did not.
Okay.
They had, they had concerns that, you bring it up.
Both of them are B.
So those concerns were taken care of.
Both sides are B.
Yes. That's to illustrate the number of bedrooms on the total complex, which relates to the parking lots. This is, this is...
Mark, we can't hear you. You have to stand up and move closer if you want us to hear you. In fact, it seems to me that you and the applicants need to have a serious meeting of the minds before we bring this public hearing forward again.
Let me talk to them, I'm confused there.
I think you folks, you, you folks don't agree on enough for us to be in a position to make any...
Oh, no, I, I agree with on this, with this issue.
Okay.
This was, there was an issue around the original set of plans that we did not approve. We showed extra doors here and some other issues that we knew had intent to them.
Are these approved plans right here?
I think these are copied approvals.
These are the only plans that exist?
Yes, well, there was an original set that we denied.
See, that's what I mean. You folks need to talk.
No, but, Rick, that's, it's irrelevant. We're not talking about an original set of plans. I've never seen the original set of plans. All I'm talking about is the official set of plans.
So this is...
We are referring to the official set of plans.
This is what's built.
Which building was this?
This is Building C, originally, they're the same.
All those are identical.
So this is, this is what's going on here. Bedroom 3, Bedroom, Bedroom. Bedroom 3, Bedroom, Bedroom. Are these two bedrooms or four?
Okay, but, but, so those are, those are good questions, but this is what the building permit was issued for, right? So you're challenging the CO issued for a building permit. So it's too late at this point to challenge the plans, because they received the building permit for this.
No, we're not, we're not checking, we're, we're...
So you're challenging the CO.
No, we're, we're, what we're discussing is the inadequacy of the parking lot. Because there are thirty-eight bedrooms.
And not enough parking.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not challenging the, the building permit. The, there are thirty-eight bedrooms on this, on this complex at a minimum. I'm not even including great rooms, family rooms, rec rooms, or living rooms. Who knows what goes on in any of those things? Whether they have partitions, I do not know because I've not been inside these buildings. But I know that in my house, I don't have a great room, a family room, a rec room, and a living room. I don't have all those things. We have bedrooms. So the point that, all I'm trying to illustrate is that a parking lot with nineteen, nineteen parking spaces cannot serve a complex with thirty-eight bedrooms. At least thirty-eight bedrooms. So I will continue. The maximum permitted height. And, and then also, as, as I showed you, in Building B here, this is a three-and-a-half-story building, not a two-story. And the reason that I bring that up is because the trend continues. Buildings B, which I pointed out, Buildings C and D, this is a three-and-a-half-story building. And the reason it is considered a three-and-a-half-story building is because of our code 2125. Includes the following definition. A basement shall be counted as one story in determining the height of a building in stories. And we had a question during the.
You didn't finish that code.
I absolutely did, that's.
No, that code says if the basement, if fifty percent of the basement, more than fifty percent of the floors above certain feet, that's considered a story. If the basement is barely served yet, it's not considered a story.
It does not say that in the code.
You showed where it's built, and it defines a story.
I'm, I'm referring to our Village Code. This is, this is what it says.
It's a story, it's what the story is.
A basement is considered a story. That is what our Village Code clearly states. So we have Building B, Building C, and Building D. All at three-and-a-half stories.
Actually, I think, they're only three stories.
No, three-and-a-half stories. A, a.
No, there's not, there's not finished attic, there's no choices.
I mean, we can pull up the definition of an attic, too. That's, that's not a problem.
No, there's, there's, it shows on the picture. Two stories in the basement would be, if you're arguing a third.
Okay.
This is not a half-story?
I think, yes. Yes, I'm, I'm just trying to. Mark, 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 could you? Mark, thank you. Thank you, but let's let Tim finish his presentation, please.
If you want to correct it and say it's a three-story building, you're still gonna have.
Could you just address us, thank you.
You're still gonna have the same issues with a three-story building.
Address us, please.
Do these buildings require automatic sprinkler systems to comply with New York State Fire Code considering their height and stick frame construction? Now I'm on to a new topic. The complex also has an open building permit 14079 to rebuild its fifth structure, Building E, which county records had described as a seventeen-by-fourteen-foot machine shed from 1900. So here are the county records listing the machine shed at fourteen by seventeen feet. So I have copies. And you'll also see.
Is there a common building permit? Yeah, that's what I asked, I've never heard of this.
You'll also see a picture of this machine shed or garage. The building permit 14079 reads, and I'm reading this verbatim. Taking garage, turning it into laundry room and storage also will include a kitchenette and bathroom. So here's my question. First, how can this even be considered with 21217C and its discussion of the maximum number of principal buildings per lot? Second, when does a laundry and storage space include a kitchenette? Additionally, 21220 states no accessory building shall be located closer to the side and rear lot lines than twelve feet or a distance equivalent to the height of the accessory building, whichever is greater. Then 21254 states no existing building or premises devoted to a non-conforming use shall be enlarged, extended, reconstructed, substituted, or structurally altered except when changed to a conforming use or when required to do so by law. The machine shed, we're calling it Building E, is now sixty-six percent larger at twenty-two by eighteen feet versus its original dimensions listed with the county. And it has a completely different, this is, this is very relevant because again, we're talking about a, a site plan with five structures.
Okay, I'm just trying to go back to your application for your reputation.
Right.
And I want to just sort of hang this information you're giving to us on the proper, um, part of your, your appeal. So was this given a certificate of occupancy? That's the reference in this interaction?
Well, actually, we also have an email, an email trail of, of, of foils and me asking for all of the building permits. And this was only sent to me more recently. And it's very much related because it's the fifth structure, which again relates to how to fire a truck.
I, I understand that.
Get in the parking lot.
But Tim.
In a parking lot, that's not compliant. In a parking lot, that's completely unsafe.
Okay, Tim, just humor me. I'm just trying to get the whole map in my head. So is this a certificate, any, is this one of the three certificates? Two certificates of occupancy or a certificate of compliance?
Katie, you know what I find to be truly amazing? Is I foiled all of the buildings, the building permits, all of the certificates of compliance of occupancy. I never, ever received this until several months later.
Okay.
That's because it was being processed. It was still in the process of becoming. So when it was foiled, it wasn't.
But the date, the date of the application was well before I foiled anything.
Did this receive site plan review?
No.
Was this not for the.
I'm just asking.
It's all related. It is all related to this parking lot that is not compliant. That is, we're, we're putting residents' lives at risk. That is what's going on here. If, if, if we insist on only looking at things in isolation, we're never going to be able to look at this and what's actually going on.
Tim, I, I understand that and I appreciate that. But there is also, um, we have to deal with what we have been asked to review. And now if you amend the application, that's another story. And I, I don't know, I imagine you can do that. But we have been asked to look at certain items. And I'm just trying to see what you're presenting tonight applies to those certain items. You may come back and say, we want to amend it with this, this, and this. But right now, this is what is before us. And so I'm trying to relate it to what is before us.
Do you think it's, I mean, nineteen striped parking spaces? So, so would this new machine shed require a parking space considering it has a bathroom and a kitchenette?
That's not for me to decide. That is for the building department.
I don't know either, and that's the problem here. No one knows.
The trouble here is that the, the building permits were issued and the settlement agreement did not require site plan review as part of the settlement agreement. So the building permits were issued for the individual structures. So the outside issues are not something that were necessarily considered when the building permits were issued because they were not required to be considered. And so I think the argument here is that everything should have been considered? I mean, is that how you're trying to pull it all together? Because it really needs to be.
We can, we could only, we could only appeal based on what we received from the building department. So if I foiled or requested, and I have all the emails that show, is this the most recent site plan? Are these all the building permits? So I can only respond to what I'm receiving from the building department.
I'm not arguing with you on that. I'm just trying to, again, take what I'm hearing and put the right pieces on the right pieces of your initial application.
I mean, this is, you know, this is my final point regarding this, this machine shed. On August 7th, well before the, the issuance of these certificates of occupancy, I emailed the building department to ask whether the shed had received a variance to rebuild so close to the repaper, to the property line adjacent to the street. The building department responded with, by email, the building closest to the lot line is an existing structure that's getting a new roof. I responded by email and said, there was a structure there, but it, but they demolished it and poured a new foundation. That's not a new roof.
But you did not challenge the issuance of the building permit for this structure?
I never received, I, I asked for the building permits and I never received them until deep into the fall.
Since you received them.
But I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not challenging any building permits. I'm challenging certificates of occupancy. So there is no certificate of occupancy for this machine shed.
Okay, right, it's not.
There's no site plan for the machine shed?
It's not part of the three COs that you're challenging.
That's right, there, there's nothing to challenge. But it's very much related to, to our, our, our appeal of these certificates of occupancy. How does an apartment complex with only nineteen parking spots accommodate thirty-eight bedrooms and a, a machine shed with a kitchenette?
Can I ask a question about the settlement?
Yes, please do.
Does this settlement mean that they can build whatever they want on this property without approval or site plan? I mean, indefinitely.
May I ask that society?
No.
No way.
No. No.
Yeah, you can read the settlement, too.
So the settlement, I have to, I don't have them identified right now, but it, it had a specific list of actions that could be taken pursuant to the settlement. And three of those actions were issuance of building permits for the, for the, that resulted in these three certificates of occupancy. And as part of that, site plan review from the planning board is not required, but the planning board engineer was required to sign off for drainage issues. Now is that site plan review that's not required for everything on the property or just for those specific? Only for those three specific structures.
And, and isn't it also for just one of the two pieces of property? So the part that.
We're not discussing the Pencil Hill property, right?
I'm not. Right, so the part that kind of goes down by where Water Street is, that would have to go through a planning board process.
The settlement says that the Pencil Hill property is subject to planning board review.
Right.
Right, it clearly.
So the, the settlement also clearly says that, that, uh, building permits would be granted to three-bedroom apartments. So two times three equals six. So in Building D and Building C, there should be six bedrooms.
Each.
Each, for a total of twelve bedrooms in Buildings C and D. So, you know, as, as I pulled up the, the floor plans before, I don't believe any reasonable person would look at those floor plans and say that there are only twelve bedrooms in C and D. There are many more, many more bedrooms. The, as I've stated several times now, the entire complex has at least thirty-eight bedrooms. And the site plan indicates twenty-one. The parking lot indicates nineteen bedrooms because it only has nineteen parking spots. So the, the, the site plan does not jive with the parking lot. That should be just red flag number one. How, how does that happen?
That's, I mean, that's a question that we need to have answered.
Yes.
At the time of the settlement, the requirement wasn't three bedrooms per unit. It was two bedrooms per unit.
Doesn't say that in the settlement.
Two, two parking spots, I'm sorry, two parking spots per unit. Yeah, I missed that.
Okay, two parking spots per unit.
And it was supposed to be three parking spots that are required per unit now.
You mean. So for the six, for each six bedrooms, they only needed two parking spaces?
No.
Per unit.
Per unit, so even if there was three bedrooms in the unit, it still only needed two parking spaces.
Okay. And that. Oh, but that's the article seventy-eight.
It's not in the settlement.
So that was the site. This, the settlement.
That's all we can went to settle.
Okay, let's, let's, this is Tim's time to speak.
Okay, the applications were submitted before the zoning law change.
Yes.
And so the settlement, um, the lawsuit was based on the fact that the village didn't process the application. Whether that's true or not, I'm not going to speak to that, but they settled based on that assertion. And so the plans that were submitted to those meetings were the plans that ended up being proposed.
So you got this, did you?
The plans that received building permits had the pre-zoning change calculations. So they don't conform to the current code, but they did require, they did conform to what was.
What under the.
It doesn't say that in the settlement.
May I?
But it's inherent, I mean, of course, the papers.
Could we have this exchanged, just let her? So at the ti, according to what was in place at the time of the settlement, what were the expected or allowed or whatever number of bedrooms per unit?
That's, that's what I had asked Mark Jaffe. What were the approved plans at that time? Because there were certain plans on file. Um, and those were the ones that, the Article seventy-eight was brought to get permission for.
So what do any of us need to do to get that packet?
Yeah.
Is that a reasonable question? Madam Chairperson, if, if, if I'm jumping out of order.
No, I, I think we need some clarity.
I think we should ask the building inspector to provide us with the information regarding, you know, the building permit applications and the plans that were approved and the building permits issued, so we can see that it was all the same.
He's, he's got probably the proof, so.
Okay, but we're gonna need something for us because obviously we're not grasping.
I mean, right, we don't have copies of this and.
Look, no, I don't understand. Village gave off its right authority for site.
Okay, wait, Mark, we're not doing, we're not doing that right now, Mark. I'm, I'm just curious if we could have any other, um, information from the people here? And if none, if it wouldn't be wise to, um, have a motion to continue this at another time? Okay, is that a motion?
You mean the discussion?
Mm-hmm, the discussion of this board. I, I, I think I would like to make a motion that this public hearing be continued at our next meeting and that we take, take this opportunity to close it down. May I, may I ask for point of order at this moment?
Sure.
Okay. So if, if we're going to do this, what, what is it that we need to have in front of us that will enable us to review? And can, can the applicant know that whatever the applicants then need, they will get in a timely fashion to be able to be, so that we're all on the same page?
a timely fashion to be able to be, so that we're all on the same page at the next meeting?
So the applicant's appeal was limited to whether or not the COs should have been issued due to a lack of site plan.
Yes.
That, that was the scope of the appeal. If the applicant is amending that appeal, then A, we would need an amended application and I would actually need to do some research.
I don't think that's fair to say, that the, that the appeal only related to site plan. It's the appeal of the certificates of occupancy. It does not state, our appeal does not state that it's only subject to site plan review.
So that was the basis for the appeal as I read it? If that's no longer, that was the basis as I read the...
Nothing changed. Our appeal is for the certificates of occupancy.
What we have here is, it says the certificates pursuant to permits fourteen twenty-six, fourteen thirty-five, and fourteen thirteen. That's a great number, is it? Oh, yeah, it is. Were issued in violation of Village Code and are therefore invalid. See attached appeal to the ZVA dated nine nineteen fourteen. There are numerous procedural and code violations in the design and execution of Two Mohunk resulting in a project. See page two. So what I have here is then the undersigned aggrieved parties wish to file an appeal to be reviewed by the Village of New Paul's Zoning Board of Appeals concerning the certificates of compliance and occupancy issued for Two Mohunk Avenue specifically. Certificates of occupancy, and you list fourteen twenty-six, fourteen thirty-five, and certificate of compliance, fourteen thirteen. These certificates were issued in violation of law as the building permits which they were issued pursuant to are themselves invalid in that in violation of Village Code twenty twelve, twenty, twenty twelve dash twenty-three, they were not issued in accordance with a properly approved site plan. Therefore, all construction and site development executed in reliance upon these permits is unlawful. It being well established in case law that a permit issued in violation of laws, of law confers no vested right or privilege on the person to whom the permit has been issued. On September tenth, twenty fourteen, we became aware of the certificates having been thus issued and filed a FOIL request for copies of the documents from the property's file. We are waiting for action by the Building Department on that request. When we have the material that we need from the Two Mohunk Avenue property file, we will be in a position to properly present a more detailed complaint. And we need, I mean, the sense I have tonight is you are presenting us verbally with a more detailed complaint, but we can't respond to just a verbal complaint. We need to have something that is put in writing, something that Mr. Cafrey and his attorney can respond to.
And that's why we provided you with our comments in writing.
Okay. And so those are the comments...
And Terry also has written comments that he's provided.
Are these what you just provided tonight?
I don't know where it is within your, within your palm. It's that plus...
Yeah. See, I mean, Tim, we just need to get this stuff together very clearly because...
And I'm glad you read that because I, I think it clearly states that we, we are challenging the certificates of occupancy because of the violations of Village Code.
Okay. So, the thing is, we need to have something from you that is, you know, this is good, but we need to have what you have said here. When we have material, the material we need from the Two Mohunk Avenue property file, we will be in a position to properly present a more detailed complaint. We need that more detailed complaint in writing.
Which, which we gave you more comments.
Which is this tonight.
As well as that.
As well as...
Everything that we read.
What she read, Josh. Do you want?
Okay. I just, I can't see what it is. Was it the one that, this is January thirteenth. This is what you just read tonight. Thank you. Besides, thank you. I have a lot of paper in front of me, Tim. Sorry. You know, what might help, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it wouldn't be helpful. I was just thinking of a very clear timeline of the actions.
Yeah.
Which actions?
All of them. When, when the code was changed, when things were issued, that sort of thing would...
When things were requested?
When you're going... That sort of thing. But I'd, I'd like to go back to my aborted motion.
Wait. I never got to finish saying else we needed to...
Please do.
So if, if the...
Is that an amendment? Is that accepted as an amendment? Well, I understand.
No, we have not, no one has seconded it.
No, it's not amending their appeal. They're still healing the same things that they were already appealing.
Yeah. They're adding... Okay. Hold on. Wait, wait. Let's deal with the amendment first, the, the motion first. I, I, given that there's no other comments from the people here, I, I would like to have us table this hearing until our next meeting. And I think we should refer in private with our attorney at the end of this meeting.
Are those two separate motions?
No. It's an omnibus motion. Trying to simplify things. Is there a second on that motion?
I would prefer that it be two separate motions, both of which I would pass.
Don't second it. Don't second it though.
Okay.
Okay. Before we get to that motion, so the motion did not get a second. Okay. So, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what constitutes your application for interpretation. So, we have this, which is very clearly to me an application for interpretation. We have a document that was put on the table tonight that has thirteen, fourteen pages.
Plus, plus my handout.
Okay. Hey, just a second. I gotta get a copy of that handout. But, I'm a librarian, I'm sorry. There's no name on this.
I've got a name on mine. That's Terry's fault.
I want to...
Manager.
I'm sorry.
You have to deal with the motion to pay the fee. Seconded this or failed.
It failed.
You cannot...
It failed. It failed.
For lack of second?
It failed for lack of second.
You didn't announce that.
She did. I just...
I did. I did do that one. So wait, just a second. Okay. What I want is something that's really clearly, this is what the, the motion has been, the applicants are Teresa Fall and RS Julia LLC. So I want you, and are you...
I'm just a member of RS Julia.
You are, but you are their representing member.
Yes.
Okay. So, I've got to find my shirt. Can you find, no, that's fourteen. That's the fourteen.
You have this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have a whole lot of paper in front of me. I'm sorry. Do you have another? I forgot. Somebody get under the property. I have to work here. Okay. And, so, this needs to be somehow formally, formally amended with Logan. That you want all of this to constitute your application for interpretation? I mean, we, we have to like really know what we're being asked to interpret.
Well, so all of the materials excepted as part of the record, but I think that the trouble here is we can't deal with a moving target. And so, we would like a clear explanation of what the, you know, what your challenge is and what's the basis for it.
Yeah.
And then, that, that's what's being asked for.
Well, I, I appreciate the, the idea of the moving target, but I feel like we've also been asked to respond to a moving target where we've, we've asked for documents and...
That's not disputed. I mean, this board doesn't provide the documents.
I know, but I'm, I'm just explaining, you know, when I originally asked to appeal this, I was giving, I was given a, an application for an area variance.
Correct. There, there was some confusion when we first appealed and we worked that out in about twenty-four to thirty-six hours. So, it wasn't a big deal. We worked it out in, running out of time.
Well, except, except the note that, that Katie read from the, the building inspector is referring to the timeliness of our appeal. So it is referring to something that you just said was worked out within twenty-four hours, but apparently it was not updated.
And I'm not, what was worked out was that we gave you the correct information. It's still, there's still a question as to whether or not it was filed correctly with the application fee, but in, in moving this forward, the board decided to accept it and deal with that. So, it still could come up later, but the applications have been accepted for now. So, that has been dealt with, it was dealt with quickly, so...
But, but it still could come up later, so...
Do we have a date when this was actually filed? Is there a date that everyone on the board would agree it was filed? Because I saw something that said the twenty-ninth of September, but I don't know if that's accurate.
Well, the fee was paid on the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth.
So, I think the twenty-ninth is too late.
The fee was paid on the twenty-fifth. We know it was filed though? It's got to be filed with the building inspector, right?
Yeah, it was, it was the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, twenty-fifth.
So it was filed on the twenty-fifth as well?
Yeah.
Is there any, is there any question by anyone, Tim? Is that accurate?
I, I don't have all the dates memorized, but I do have a, a, a email paper trail that...
Yeah. So the application to challenge the COs was not considered filed until September twenty-fifth, the date the fee was paid. That's the date.
But it was, it was written September nineteenth.
No, 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 no. 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 What are you reading?
I'm reading my notes. Because I went through all this in anticipation of this discussion. So it's, again, that's not something we need to...
Well, you know, Ellen asked for a timeline, so we can include that timeline and I can attach the actual emails and, and dates and responses that I received from the Building Department. There's a very, very well documented paper trail for all of this.
Okay.
So I'd rather not, you know, go by what, you know, we believe or we think the, you know, it's like this was all, this was all well documented.
Right. Twenty-fifth is when we received the fee.
I, I, no, I'm, I'm not committing to that. I don't necessarily agree that that's accurate because I've had...
Point of clarification?
Yes.
If there were requests, the, it couldn't be filed until they had all the information they had requested, right?
I mean, technically, but if they requested information on the last day, then they weren't going to get that information.
We didn't, yeah.
I'm asking a hypothetical question.
Yeah. I'm not saying you...
But it's not relevant.
I'm sorry. The reason I'm asking is because it seems to me, however onerous it might be to put together a timeline, if it turns out that because of, there's a question, not a statement, because of circumstances beyond the applicant's control, then does, is, is that noteworthy? Should that be noted? In which case, a timeline might show that.
So this is something that we can discuss in attorney-client.
Okay.
They should prepare a timeline if they don't want that to be an issue. But I believe I put that in my memo that everyone received for the last meeting.
Yes, it did.
The snowed out meeting. So we do, we can discuss that.
Okay. So, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
No. Oh, wait. No, I'm sorry. To leave it open, to, um...
Continue the public hearing until the mark.
To continue. Excuse me. Thank you, thank you, thank you. To continue the public hearing, I just, to continue the public hearing to our meeting, please, February tenth. But you know what? Teresa's been sitting here all night and we have not heard from Teresa.
Well, I'm, part of me being, the main thing about me doing this application is because the integrity of my neighborhood, which it does involve the CO. I had a video I wanted to show earlier, but it's actually part of public comment.
So, this is a video done by my daughter, for example, of what we're having to deal with in the neighborhood. We're the closest people out of anyone in here probably to the project or One Mohunk Avenue. And it does definitely affect our everyday life, this project being there. As far as noise, students, the cars coming in and out. I almost got hit the other day by someone, not even paying, a student not paying attention. It's a, it's a very dangerous intersection. But, you know, it's a, it's a topic in our house. I have an eleven-year-old and an eight-year-old, but my daughter is a little too shy to speak at the meeting. And this was, this was taken before the meeting when it was snowed out. So if we didn't...
She should be able to be here, but just easier to put that on. Let me just, let me see if it works.
My name is Frances Shemry. I'm eleven years old and go to NTP Elementary School, and I'm in fifth grade. I live at One Mohunk Avenue right across from Two Mohunk. The things that disappoint me about Two Mohunk Avenue is that the college students are noisy at night. Sometimes I can't sleep and that can affect my school grade. Once I had a math test and I almost failed because of lack of sleep. Also, the trees are getting cut down. It's bad for the environment and also now it doesn't look as pretty. Also, there's, there's going to be more sewage and garbage in our area. Think how that can affect our environment.
So anyway, that's just, and a small example of conversations we do have in our house. We get woken up, we do get woken up quite a bit, and we live in a neighborhood where that, that can happen, but it's tenfold right now. And that's my, my part of this also has to do with how it affects my property value and the neighborhood and every, you know, all of that encompassing.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
I didn't want to get off, it seemed like we were focusing on that, but...
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, that's what we have to focus on.
It is. It is, absolutely.
And, I mean, the, the human side of it is ultimately what's important, but we have a appellate function and that's how we have to function. So, could I have a motion to continue the meeting until our February meeting?
Public hearing.
To continue the public hearing, yes.
Yes.
At, at, at the time, too.
Oh, at seven PM on February tenth.
Seven.
Okay. All in favor?
I won't be here at that meeting, but I am in favor of keeping it open.
Okay.
Everybody can get sick.
Yeah, we better all be healthy.
Who, who motioned?
Vicky. Vicky, seconded by Ellen. And Joanna will not be able to attend that meeting.
But I'm in favor of keeping it open, so.
Yeah.
I...
So, wish us good health. And it seems unlikely that they will be here. Okay. I read it.
And then, will we also asking that pertinent materials be available to us and to the applicant in advance of the meeting?
Well, that doesn't need to be a motion.
That does not need to be a motion, but...
Does that need to be a motion?
No, I don't think it does need to be a motion.
I'm going to send Mr. Robbins a copy of everything that I've sent you. So if we're going to proceed this way, it's best that he knows what I'm sending in. And all I ask is the same. I will give him my business card and ask whatever he submits, please submit to me as well, so that we're all on the same page as best we can when we come to these meetings. If that's, if that's, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to offer him, tell him.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Okay. So then, let me... Would you like another motion in regard to having an attorney-client session at the end of this meeting? Yes, I would.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The motion passed. We have an attorney-client now. Okay. We want to do, yeah, and I've got to find the thing where I had written down my notes because we're going to do, no, no, no.
Can we have a two-minute break?
Oh. I think we can have two-minute break. We only have one bathroom.
No.
First one there. Moi. Yeah, if, you would all indulge us, we're going to take a five-minute break. Yeah, if, you would all indulge us, we're going to take a five-minute break.
We do? I thought my lip balm would do it. Yeah, I really should be hating now.
Order at nine oh, like, two. Nine oh two. So, the next order of business on the agenda is a public hearing for ZBA 1413 for the property at 43 Center Street. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for ZBA 1413? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anybody in the public who would wish to speak to the application for ZBA 1413, the property at 43 Center Street in New Paltz? No one is standing to speak. So, I have here a notice of determination from the building inspector. After reviewing the project, I have determined that a change of use to the existing garage from a utility, comma, art/work studio to a single-family detached dwelling is allowed. It is my determination that 2012-17C does not apply since the building is existing and not being restrict, excuse me, and not being constructed as the section states. However, the building does not meet the required front yard or side yard setback specified in Village Code 2013-B8-B1 and Village Code 2112-13B-B1. Requiring a minimum of front yard, wait, I'm sorry. And, yeah, so that two variances are required from the ZBA. A front yard setback of 25 feet. Structure currently has a setback of 11 feet 1 inches. Variance required is 13 feet 11 inches. And a side yard setback of 12.5 feet required currently, the structure currently has 2 inches of side yard setback variance of 12 feet 4 inches would be required. Actually, I think that's 12.3, that's okay. And then, the planning board recommendation. Mr. Stephens motioned to make a negative recommendation on the application for Mr. Butler's property on Center Street, but requested that the ZBA consider whether it can be approved as an accessory apartment. Mr. Zealer seconded, four ayes, zero nays, one absent. Miss Harrell, motion carries. Okay, so, I've already gone through, anybody from the public? Is the applicant present? The applicant is not present, but.
Should we move to closing the public hearing? Or continue it?
Should we continue it to next meeting?
Brian actually also had a memo, do you wanna read it?
I would love to read it. Okay, as you can see right here, right? The building inspector provided a letter of, oops, the planning, sorry, the planning director, provided a memo regarding the status of entry. The applicant is requesting to convert his existing garage from a utility slash art studio to a single-family dwelling unit requiring area variances for front and side yard setbacks. The existing garage is located 13 feet 11 inches and 2 inches from the front and side property lines and would require a 10-foot 1-inch and a 12-foot 4-inch variances respectively. Relatively, the garage is also located just a few feet away from the neighboring house to the east. While I can sympathize with the applicant's desire to generate more income, I would be leery to grant a variance for a residence so close to a neighboring house. Based on Village Code, the intent in this district is that homes be located 25 feet apart. Village Code 212-17C permits only one primary, one or two-family structure be constructed per parcel in all residential residences. While this code does not specify that applicable buildings be proposed to be constructed and thus does not apply in this case to an existing garage, it seems obvious that the intent of this ordinance, that only one residential structure be allowed per building lot. Thank you. There we go. So, since the applicant is not present, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for ZBA 1413 to our February 10th meeting at 7:00 PM? So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm gonna request that personal notice of this extended hearing be given to the applicant at least 10 days prior to the hearing.
Okay. Would that happen? Thank you. Everybody left.
Is this the issue in which neighbor notification hadn't taken place?
It has.
It has now?
It has.
Obviously, it hasn't now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're over that.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, the next item on the agenda. The third item on the agenda is ZBA 1418-A and B. An application proposing a 6.25, 6 foot 2, 25-inch rears, 6.25 feet, thank you, rear yard setback and a 5-foot side yard setback to construct a shed located at 25 North Front Street. Is the applicant present? Okay.
So it says Jacob Pineberg, but he is not. But I'm also an owner of the.
Building?
Okay, so.
Okay, you identify your stuff.
Oh, yeah, so Augusta Yearwood, can I spell? No, no. Okay, all right. So, can I give you the little story of the shed?
Sure, please do.
So, I have this chocolate shop. Health and Nutrition gives us bags of packing materials, this is going, you know, the whole story. Gives us bags of packing materials that we use, because we do a lot of shipping for our chocolates, and they have a lot of packaging materials that we reuse for them. And then we have a lot of boxes that we ship chocolates in. So we were kind of going crazy with both of these things, we decided to build a shed. It was getting to be close to the holiday time, so I didn't kind of do all the research into it that I should, I asked my partner to. So he looked it up and said that structures under 144 square feet were exempt from a building permit. So we were like, great, let's do it. So, we built a lot of it, and then we got a stop-work notice, which was, I don't know if it matters, but the wrong address was listed on it, it was 25 North Chestnut or 25 North Front Street, so anyway. So, the problem is, we have, we're asking for a variance for, well, you read them, side lot and rear lot setbacks. So there's a 12-inch requirement, or 12-foot, and we're 10 feet on the rear and 3 to 4 feet on the side. So I can go through all of our hardships and everything. So the rear lot is fixed because we have an in-ground propane tank. I don't know if you have copies of our own thing right here, okay. So, as close as it can be to that, because, so we can't achieve the extra 2 feet because of the propane tank. On the side, moving it further to the side would encroach on the parking spot there. When we got our permit, we had to do a lot of figuring for the parking spots, we have just as many as we need, so we can't give up one for that setback. So, let's see, then on the survey, it looks like there's more space than there is between the shed and the closest parking spot, but there's like some steps that go up to make it safe, so there really is no space. So, ta-da, that's basically that. And, yeah, that's what I got.
Okay, so are you the owner of this property?
Yeah, yeah, with Jacob, we both own it.
Okay, so you're, okay, we just wanna make sure that you are.
Yeah, I'm not just here randomly.
Yeah, no, but, but you are one of the owners.
Yeah, he's done all of this stuff ahead of time, or before today, so I think that's why his name was on the agenda. I was hoping to not be involved at all, but he's on vacation.
And boy, what a meeting you got.
I know, yes. Yeah, I learned a lot, let me tell you.
Well, let me ask you this about the shed, is there going to be a kitchenette and a bathroom?
You know, a couple, it's gonna have a great room and a sunroom and, you know, about 12 bedrooms. No, basically, it's just a 12-by-12-foot, yeah, no one's gonna live there. So it's a 12-by-12-foot space, and there's no, that's it, I mean, it's just a space that has, is gonna have boxes and.
There's no way you can fit this inside the existing building?
I wish, yeah, no, the existing building is crammed with chocolate-making supplies. So, yeah, and then we have an apartment upstairs that has people in it, so, yeah, alas. Yeah, we just looked at it, yeah. Yep, so, yeah, that's, that's what I got.
Any questions?
As long as there's no kitchen and bathroom.
Okay, as long as there's no bathroom. Okay, so would anyone, I have to get where I am, so.
Also, I just wanna quickly note that the letter of determination that was written up today, it actually inaccurate.
Oh, do you have a new one for me?
No, it did not. But Mark looked over it, and I guess the other building inspector, Rich Travis, accidentally thought that this was a residence and didn't factor in that it was an accessory building.
Yeah.
So that greatly is not a residence, the setbacks and such. And then, the other thing that he was looking into was whether or not there was gonna be 90%.
Oh, I have that info, yeah.
Oh, great.
Okay, so, yeah, I brought that here, I have just this kind of weird printed-out thing that I can pass around, or you can keep. So, yeah, we did all those numbers, so, ta-da, so we'd need 904 square feet of pervious, you know, surface. Yeah, so we did it all today, and we have, looks like 1245 square feet, so 13.6%, and you need 10%. That's, of course, not including the shed. That's just, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's all broken down on there.
So we have the required open space.
How did he measure?
Even out today, and it was very cold.
I don't have any idea what this means. Can we have, I don't have any idea what you just said.
Okay, so you need.
So, no, this is not gonna help.
Okay.
Can you explain it to us, Mark?
It's, the living lot coverage is.
I can't hear you.
Living lot coverage is building structures.
Do they need, do they need, do they need a variance or not?
I don't think so, I mean, from, from me sitting there, we have a big planter section on the side, they got, you know, there's some stone poured around that, the shed is sitting on, you know, let me say, not block top. So, I mean, I'd say, my estimate, you got 75% to 80% at the most of it, of coverage. I know this district got up to 90%.
So they don't need any variance?
I don't believe they do, because just, just normally, when I look at a lot going on both sides, there is a lot, there is a lot of grass and stuff, plants with drainage.
Well, this puts us in a funny position, I think that we should.
Well, that would be, if that is determined, they can come back for that variance as a settlement.
Who designed this? Because based on this, they don't need a variance.
Well, we got a call today.
Yeah, that's what I said, the planters. There's a set of their site plant downstairs, and I know, they usually review, they have the site plant for the chocolate shop. And due to the planter section, it's a big planter section, I know that was blown up, the reason I know this, that was playing not too long, the plan and floor members. And when I saw it, there was clearly there, I mean, it's, it's a huge thing there, so, I know that that must take at least 10% of this property itself.
So do we need to give a variance or don't we? We need a yes or a no?
At this point, I would say no.
And what we could always do is set a public hearing for the two variances that are for you, and in the meantime, perhaps the applicant can get properly surveyed.
We have, we have, we actually have a second.
Yeah. But Richard said that he wasn't able to calculate the improvement surface.
Yeah, he just said, yeah.
I was just hoping.
I'll do it. And I said, if they need that, if we're determining need that variance, they can come forward for a settlement.
Okay. You mean the open space?
Yeah.
Okay.
So should we continue this public hearing at our next meeting?
Oh, we can, this is not a public.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
You could set a public.
So, wait, so you don't have enough information to decide on the first two variances, is that what you're saying, or is it just?
Well, we still have to do a public hearing, we need more information.
What, the only information you need is about the open space?
Yeah.
Is that the, okay, yeah.
Yeah, what we need is.
Lot coverage and setback.
A clear answer in terms of, is the lot coverage, no, we, the setbacks are right here, the area variances, there are two, per side and a back, we need to know about the lot coverage. We could nonetheless set a public hearing with the understanding that if you do need to have lot coverage requested as well, then that would.
Are you saying that if a lot coverage variance is needed, it could be coupled with the February public hearing?
No, it would have to be a separate one, wouldn't it? Yeah.
You're gonna set, you're gonna set a public hearing, she says.
Yeah.
I don't know about the law.
Why, why don't we ask our planner or our attorney what we should do?
Thank you.
Rich is concerned when he wrote the determination today, though he used the wrong numbers, his concern was that if it was close to 90% impervious, then he wanted a survey. Because somebody's calculations, rough calculations when they run outside with a tape measure, isn't as accurate as we want it to be. If it was, you know, 60% impervious surface, then obviously, we're not gonna find that extra 50% and we're fine with it. But that was Rich's concern when he wrote up the determination. If it was close, then he wanted a survey. Now, if Mark can accomplish that without the survey, that's great.
The only reason I'm saying is we have a survey.
And that's what I use too for the calculations, in addition to.
Running outside.
So you can move forward and set the public hearing on the two for the variances, because I believe you have enough information for those two.
Okay.
But the applicant takes the risk now that.
You'd have to notice twice.
Right, that they're gonna have to pay twice and pay an application fee twice and come back maybe for an extra meeting if they, in fact, do need a lot coverage variance.
Can we notice for the three variances and then strike the third when it's not necessary?
The only reason you can't do that is because at this point, you wouldn't be able to say how big of a variance. Normally, when you notice, you say the, I believe you give the size of the variance that's being requested.
We would have two weeks, though, until Sunday notices.
Yeah, but, you know, we're, we're just like skating through this two informally. It's your choice, if you want to do the two variances in one meeting and pay to notice people and then pay a second application fee, should you need to for a third variance, and then pay to notice people a third, you know, a second time. We could do these two in February, but you would run the risk of still having to wait until March. Do you wanna get all your ducks lined up for next meeting?
Well, I think, are you saying you could come out tomorrow and then take a look at things? I think I'm gonna chance it, because I feel confident with my numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm gonna hope. So then.
I should schedule a public hearing for the February 10th meeting.
At 7:00 PM.
Oh, yay.
Seven, the meeting will be at 7:00 PM, the hearing won't, that other guy is gonna be here first. Yeah, let's get real here.
If you thought this was going to be shorter, you could hold it before the other public hearing.
Well, yeah, I mean, we are, we're specifying the meeting time starts at 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe you could arm wrestle the other guy to see who goes first.
That's what we do with the planning board.
I know what you're talking about.
So, wait, can I just ask?
Wait, look, we need, we have a motion on the table, and a second, and a second, all in favor, aye. Okay, the motion has passed. Yes.
So just to be clear, so you have all the information you need about the first two variances, and it's just a public hearing to see if there's any public concern or.
Yes, yes, if your neighbors are going to say, I can't stand that, no, you can't do it, that shed is so noisy, it gets me up at all hours of the night.
Got it. Okay.
Does this need to be referred to the planning board for?
Good point. Yes, it does.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You have it before the public hearing, so should you do a formal motion to refer it?
I think it always happens.
It's automatic?
Yeah.
And, just to be a stickler, do you want to classify this as a type-two seeker action? So you don't have to be seeker on it?
Okay, yes, could I have a motion to classify this as a type-two seeker action? So, all in favor?
It would be great if you did seeker on the shed and not to Mohawk Avenue. All right.
Well, that's an interpretation.
Okay, so, I think we are set then for that to happen. And, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from November 19th? Any discussion, I mean, is there a second? And then, you were absent. Vicki, were you here?
Yeah. I don't have anything.
What?
I don't have anything.
Oh, no, would you like to second it?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, and so, all in favor? Aye. And Ellen is an abstention. Okay, and then, could I have a motion to go into executive session for purposes of illegal discussion?
Advice of counsel.
Advice of counsel. All in favor? Aye. Oh, okay, so, at 9:25, 23, actually, at 9:23, the ZBA will move into executive session for advice of counsel. Thank you.